Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we call for a motion for the agenda, we do have a very important decision tonight in a very emergency situation that's facing our city. And I just ask that you all join me with an opening prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we ask your blessing upon this gathering tonight. We pray that your presence would be here, that you would give us wisdom and guidance as we make very important decisions to guide this community. We ask for your protection over the community, Lord. We ask that you would replace our fear with faith, our sickness with healing. And Father, we ask your protection over our state and over its leaders, particularly Governor Noem and those that are working this crisis every day. And we ask, Lord, for our nation to be blessed and healed, bless our leaders, our president, vice president, those in Congress, that the decisions they make would benefit us all. And now, Father, we also ask your special hand protection over the healthcare workers, first responders, and those that are serving to keep us well. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen. I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Nelson, will you adopt the agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved, and again, I would like to point out if there is a conflict of interest on any items that we vote on this evening, that the entire council would be notified prior to voting. Before we go into communications from the public, I've got some opening comments that I would like to make, and I've asked Bob to go through the context of the ordinance that we're looking at tonight, so that everyone will have a frame of reference prior to the communications of the public, so that you'll know what we're going to be considering.
Mayor Cotty?
Yes.
I think we have another agenda item that we have to... Hold on.
C.
Agenda item C.
Okay. I'm sorry, I did miss that. And thank you for calling that a good question. I'd ask for a motion to waive the council pay for this special meeting.
I make a motion to waive council pay for special meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to waive council pay. Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The council pay is waived. Thanks for catching that. That's normally on there, so... Well, we've gotten to a point in Fall River County where we've reached a trigger point, where we've had a case of the COVID-19 virus. Fortunately, today, we saw that case has been healed. And in investigating where that originated and how that was tracked, it was not from Fall River Health. The Department of Health, I check with every day to get an update from them, along with I have contacted the director of the VA, Director Horstman. I did get a call from Director Horstman today. She'd been very cooperative. There've been a couple of additional cases in the VA system. Under their privacy concerns, they cannot specifically identify locations or what those cases are. They've turned them over to the Department of Health. I did get a call from the Department of Health just before coming here tonight, and we have no pending cases as of this time in Fall River County. However, that can change in an instant, and that's how this operates. As this virus operates, things move sometimes very quickly, and so we are not in a situation of community spread, and the one case that we have documented has been healed. And I do appreciate the fact that the VA is communicating with us also. That is also very helpful to try to ensure we've got a complete understanding of where we stand. And I think there's been a lot of confusion with our last initial meeting that we had, emergency meeting that we had about passing the ordinance. And immediately after the meeting, I researched our South Dakota Municipal Handbook and also South Dakota Codified Law, NASH 19-15, and felt that we had emergency powers to immediately put an ordinance into effect. And I have to apologize to our attorney Garland for saying that we got that legal advice. We really didn't. I guess all I'll say is I didn't understand the legal advice that we got, and so I apologize, Garland, for that. But we have, again, tonight, we have an opportunity to consider an ordinance that would go into effect the same day as the ordinance that we passed on the past meeting. I also want to thank Bob Nelson and Bill Lukens, our council president, vice president. They were very diligent to track the legislative session. We had some very important bills that were going on there, particularly Senate Bill 191, which was an emergency bill that would give the city municipalities within South Dakota an opportunity to pass emergency legislation without the customary waiting time. And unfortunately, throughout the day and into the evening, the amendments came and went, and that bill eventually failed. And so it was still under the same criteria that we have been in the past. So tonight, we will be considering a first reading of an ordinance that has had what we felt is substantial change. At our last meeting, we also passed a resolution, and that resolution mirrored the governor's executive order. Resolution is effective immediately. According to the municipal handbook, it gives determination, decision, and direction of the governing body for the purpose of initiating and carrying out a policy and guidance. Where the resolution is not enforceable, it does speak what the council or leading governing body of the city expects from its residents. And after passing that, we have seen excellent cooperation from our businesses. There's been some concerns. We've talked to business owners, and generally overall, everyone has been most cooperative. So tonight, we'll be asking for a first reading of this new ordinance. The second reading will come at our regular council meeting on the 6th of April, and then after it has been published, it will become effective on the 9th of April. I think it's very important that we understand that our first priority as a city and as a council is to bend the curve. I've asked our police officers to do random checks for two reasons. First of all, to answer any questions that people might have, and secondly, to check and ensure that the resolution and soon the ordinance will be followed. That is our primary function as a community right now, is to bend that curve so that we don't overwhelm our healthcare system. I look at this kind of like a military operation. We can't be compared to New York there, where all the big battalions are located. We're kind of a small fort on the plains of South Dakota. We know that the enemy is coming. The coronavirus, it's not a matter of if it's going to hit us, it's when, and it already has. We have good intelligence, but the problem is that intelligence is usually a day or too late. And so our first priority is to keep those impacts at a minimum. We don't want any casualties, and we want to minimize the opportunity for members of our community to contract the disease. And so for each of us, it's all of us as citizens of this community to be proactive, take on personal responsibility in the use of good hygiene. If you don't feel well, don't go to work, stay home, and don't take any chances. We need to bend that curve, and the ordinance that we're looking at tonight gives us an opportunity to do that with some legal backing behind that. We've looked at it backwards and forwards, and I think hopefully we've established a good balance where we respect the rights of the people and the businesses of Hot Springs, South Dakota, as well as providing an opportunity to protect our citizens. So with that, I would ask Bob that you would go through the ordinance so that the community does have an idea of what we are looking at, and then we'll take communication from the public.
First, I would like to say to the council, the mayor had talked about his veto. He reached out to me Friday morning and had identified what he felt he found in codified law that would still allow the council to react quickly, even though the ordinance would be vetoed. He asked me to read that codified law, and I did that. And because I feel strongly that we need to have something in place to act quickly, I read more into the ordinance or into the codified law than what was there. I didn't read deep enough into it. Garland was adamant in his interpretation of the law, which simply demonstrates I shouldn't do those kinds of things and try to think that I can be a lawyer. So I appreciate you, as I'd asked you in the email, tell us what we need to hear, not what we want to hear. Thank you for hanging on to that. So the decision wasn't... Obviously, the veto is the mayor's decision only, but he did reach out to me and ask how I felt about that, and I think it's important to share that I was part of the decision in recommending to the mayor that I would support his veto based on my erroneous understanding of codified law. To the ordinance itself, as the mayor has said, he, Bill, and I got together Monday morning, I'm losing track of the days, to address what we felt we heard from the public, to address what the governor's guidance has been to us through the executive session or her executive order. And that's what we tried to put in the ordinance that you folks will be considering tonight. And we focused on the fact that we don't want mandated closures. And it's unfortunate that the questions that we're getting from the community, and I got three of them today, is why are you folks closing businesses? Now, anybody that's had an opportunity to read the ordinance, I think you'll see that we're not... Our focus is not to close businesses. That's not what we want to do. So we looked at building flexibility into it, allowing individual businesses to look at how they provide a service, and depending on what that service is, how they might change it. We looked at the CDC guidelines, and the focus still is having no more than 10 people gathered together. That is still a recommendation. We also looked, and I neglected to mention this to the council at the last meeting, there were so many things that, so many questions that were going on, but we've also looked to our health professionals, as they're doing at the federal level and as they're doing at the state level. It doesn't... We shouldn't be second guessing them. So what I wanted to share with you last time and forgot is what I want to... You have a copy tonight, and I want to read it for the public. It was an email that was sent to the mayor by Tricia Euler on March 23rd. "Mayor Cotty, it is my recommendation that the city of Hot Springs follow suit with the closure of public areas as Rapid City has done. This should be done expeditiously, as once as a case is confirmed in Hot Springs or even Rapid City, it will be too late. Nobody will fault you for taking early stance and being proactive. However, blame will cast if you are late to the game. Take care. Tricia Euler, Chief Executive Officer, Fall River Health System." So to the changes that we talked about, if you have the ordinance in front of you tonight, if you picked it up in your package, it was available to you for review, let me go through the changes that we're proposing for the ordinance tonight. The first page, there are no changes on that. From the three of us, I believe there will be some recommended changes that Misty will talk about from someone who sent an email, and I'll address those when we get into that. The first changes will be on page two, under the first chapter, and it'll be the last sentence where we made the first change. The original sentence was, "Any business continuing to operate in order to provide off-site service should implement." We changed that to "shall implement." Paragraph two, there are two changes in there, one that isn't reflected in the ordinance that you have in front of you, because as we were adding things and as we were striking things, then when it came time to either accept or reject those edits, I rejected the first one that I'm going to talk to you about, so it was inadvertent, and we wanted it there, and it just got deleted out. So, at 6:00 PM, April 9, 2020, this one reads, "All recreational facilities..." You need to insert in front of that, "all churches," and then we'll say recreational facilities. And then it goes on further on the second sentence, in which "more than 10, 10 people to include employees." And we felt it was important to add the, to include employees. We didn't want to get in a situation, if we had to enforce this ordinance, that it would be the responsibility of the police to go in and determine, when we've got three employees, they don't count, and so that we've got 10 patrons. The disease doesn't care whether you're an employee or you're a patron. If you're a living, breathing body, we feel it's important that you count towards that 10. We also added that statement in that paragraph, because it was originally in paragraph five, which we didn't remove it from, but it seemed inconsistent to have it in paragraph five and not have it in paragraph two and the next one that we'll talk about. The other thing that we did, we took our attorney's recommendation and we removed the "effective." It originally said "effective at 6:00 PM," and now simply says "at 6:00 PM." So the next change is in paragraph four. Again, the same language, "more than 10 people to include employees are gathered or permitted to gather in the facility are directed to close and cease operations during this emergency." And it's important when we're talking about this, to include employees are directed to close and cease operations. We're not saying that business has to close, what we're simply saying is, keep your patrons under 10. If you're a 12, modify it, get under 10, and you're fine. You don't have to close. But if you're going to be insistent and going against good practices and recommendations, then you're at risk of being closed. Then we go on to the next page. Under, at the end of paragraph six, "However, owners, operators, and managers originally said 'should implement,' we changed that to 'shall implement.'" And the last thing that we did is, we completely struck a paragraph. The original paragraph was paragraph seven. The language in that paragraph said, "All other businesses not mentioned in this order are strongly encouraged to implement CDC recommendations to include social distancing and sanitation guidelines in their places of business..." Excuse me, "...until the expiration of this emergency order." When we got to looking at it, that seemed redundant, and we were simply repeating what had already been in it, so we removed that. So we went from an original, the ordinance that we considered first, had 12 paragraphs, and this one has 11. And those are the changes. We felt like it provided some clarity. It certainly provides more flexibility and opportunities for business owners to decide how they would want to provide a service. One question that has come to us from Facebook, and we addressed it also, is talked about salons and spas, and we feel that those types of businesses are addressed in paragraph five. And I don't want to pick on the bowling alley, but I think the bowling alley is a good example of the intent of the ordinance itself. And I say the bowling alley is a good example because they really provide three different types of services where they can. You can bowl there, you can eat there, you can do casinos there. So focusing on the bowling alley, we're not saying the bowling alley has to close. As long as you have 10 or less, including employees, in the bowling alley, you can bowl. We're looking at the casino areas differently. We understand it's under one large building, but as far as businesses, they do have different business models that are there. If you're in the bowling alley, well, you're not going to be able to, because they provide food. Paragraph one talks about food courts, coffee houses. Those are off-site. So the bowling alley can still operate. If you're going to eat, you just need to go outside to do that. So we really felt like this is a good compromise to make sure that everybody is doing their due diligence, and that individually, we're holding ourselves responsible personally and in our businesses. And the other thing I'd like to add is, you know, I've had people say, well, you know, "Don't you think this is a little extreme? You know, why are you rushing to this?" Well, South Dakota's website just announced another new death in South Dakota. It may not be Fall River, but it doesn't matter. It's another death attributed to the coronavirus, and we need to step up and do the right things, folks, and we feel the changes to this ordinance are prudent, they're responsible, and they're flexible, and they're the right things to do. Did I miss anything?
Bill, do you have any comments to add? You were a part of that.
We tried to look at, you know, I'll give you a little background. When we stood up here in July, we took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs. And those may just sound like words, but we actually went back and looked at the Constitution of the United States, we looked at the Constitution of the State of South Dakota. Don't claim to be constitutional attorneys, as Bob said, we do need to rely on our attorneys, but we did look at pertinent parts of our constitution. And we are directed by our constitution not to treat different corporations or groups differently, and we tried not to do that. That's why we did, we had a couple of things in there that actually separated out a specific type of business, and it made good sense to point them out, but it wasn't the right thing to do, and so that is not in the ordinance. We've tried to follow the constitutional guidance that is practical to follow. We've tried to do what's right. We've tried to be sensitive to the businesses, because the social separation is so important. We understand you need to do the most business you can in this horrible business environment. We also realize that, especially in the food service business, one of the things that I've listened to our governor and I've listened to the Health Department people, one of their concerns on in onsite dining is you have that extended period of exposure, which gives the virus an additional chance to spread. Well, that's not only between customers, but if you've got customers with that added exposure, that added interaction, you've increased the exposure time to your employees, which then you run the risk of losing your employees to the virus. So we are trying to take the guidance that we have from the CDC. We're trying to take the guidance that we have from the governor's executive order and truly put in a reasonable ordinance for the city of Hot Springs that doesn't shut down the city in one fell swoop, still allows the businesses to put, to allow you to, as the governor, I think, said, engage in an entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial business model to do the best you can in this, my words now, this rotten, stinking business environment, while we still protect the public, because we do have, with the demographic we have in our town, we have to do something, but we don't want to squash business in one fell swoop at this point in time. So I'm sorry if that was a little bit of rambling, but we're trying to do the best we can for everybody at this point in time.
Okay, thank you, Bill. So just again, a quick summary of what the ordinance will say, and does say, "effective at 6:00 PM on the April 9th." The areas, restaurants, food courts, coffee houses, bars, breweries, clubs, cafes, and other similar places of public accommodation, offering food and beverages for onsite consumption, including any alcohol, licenses, sale privileges are closed on sale patrons. However, we do encourage takeout, delivery, curbside service, drive-through service, and that, we want them to continue operating off-site, shall implement procedures to ensure social distancing and operate in compliance with the state and federal health regulations. We, for areas such as churches, recreational facilities, public pools, health clubs, athletic facilities, theaters, and so forth, will be limited to a venue of 10 people or less, and that includes both patrons and employees. The same is true for cigar bars, vaping lounges, or other similar business that allow for onsite consumption, are directed to cease that onsite consumption, but can continue to operate off-sale under the same under the same condition as bars and restaurants. And then for arcades, bingo halls, bowling alleys, casinos, and other recreational facilities, again, that 10 place limit is in place, including employees and those customers. For all other retail and service businesses, again, that 10, maximum of 10 people is in, would be in force. There are prohibitions. Places of accommodation that offer food and beverages such as our grocery stores, retail stores, other food and convenience stores, pharmacies, drugstores, food pantries, and other things are exempted. Hardware and supply stores are exempted. Room service in hotel, healthcare facilities, residential care facilities, congregate care facilities, correctional facilities are exempted. Crisis shelter, shelters, homeless shelters, soup kitchens, and other similar institution. And any emergency facilities for the response to the current public health emergency or other community emergency or disaster are exempted. Official meetings of the city, schools, county, or state are exempted. And operation and meetings of the state or federal courts are exempted. And I just wanted to double review that so that everyone understood what we are trying, attempting to regulate in this ordinance 1212. With that said, I would open it up to communications from the public. If you do have the communications from the public, I'd ask that you go ahead and go to the microphone. And we'll have someone, I do believe we're supposed to have someone to remove the cover after you speak. But please identify yourself and limit your comments to two minutes, if you would, please.
I'm Teresa Russ. I own college, the law, and the town. We are requesting out of 11 working stylists in this town and barbers, every single one of us needs you to name us in this bill close. Just as Bill was just speaking about, about why you wouldn't want to dine in somewhere, the exposure, the length of time. It is impossible for every single one of us to have six feet distance while we're working on client support, anywhere from a half an hour to two and a half hours. A week before this started, we had a woman bring in her child. About an hour after she was in there, she was vomiting in our salon. And three operators, a client each, a couple of clients waiting for us to get finished with one we were currently working on. If that was coronavirus, how many of us would have done that? The week before this started, I had 43 clients in one week. And then the other two operators in my salon. We see for an extended amount of time, a lot of people in this town. And that's 10 out of 11. I don't have the 11th because I did not get ahold of her. And that is Jack Kiefer at Hair Hut. She works out of her home. She's the only one I did not speak to. But everybody else in town would like you guys to name salons, address us, and request that we close our doors. Vermillion has closed. Brookings has closed. Clark has closed. Yankton has closed. Just this evening, Aberdeen has closed, all of their salons. And these are only the ones that I'm aware of. I don't know every single city in the State of South Dakota. Colorado has closed all salons. California has closed all salons. Florida, Minnesota, all shut down. And there are many more other states that I could list. You know, just today, I got a call from one of my snowbird clients. She just got in town. She wanted to see me this week. We've got clients requesting home visits. Well, if you're closed, come see me at my house. I've got a nurse client. She's an ER nurse. She's being very vocal on Facebook about people staying home. Guess who got her eyebrows black this week? So we really need to shorten this curve, the way you guys are requesting. And we would like to all be named. And the reason why is for the opportunity for this pandemic unemployment assistance. They are, it's changing rapidly. And I know everybody knows we're all self-employed. We are, I think, when you, over at Uptown, I do believe she has an employee. But the rest of us are all self-employed within one another's business. The girls that I have in my salon rent their space, so they are also self-employed. And just today, it pops up that they have a new executive order with whether or not we've been mandated to close. So this is why we need your assistance. Whether we absolutely need it or don't in order to receive any type of unemployment assistance as self-employees, it would, if it would help, and we don't know this for three weeks, it would just mean the world to all of us. We all take a lot of, we help in this town a lot, and we need your help.
Okay, I show that your two minutes is up. I appreciate your comments. I have, do have one question for you. Why can't you just close your doors?
We are, but the reason why I'm asking you mandated is in case that helps us with unemployment. We're all self-employed. So we don't, we don't apply for unemployment insurance. We don't pay into it.
Okay, and I have not looked at those a lot specifically, but I thought those, that aid that is coming down did not depend on a government mandate to close you.
It might, it might not. It changes daily.
Additional information on that? I think you had mentioned that you looked into that also.
I would first note that as far as, as far as, as far as the way I understand the ordinance currently, Bob, you correct me. This ordinance does not close any businesses as of right now, except for if they are going to exceed the 10-person limit. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the 10. If they insist on exceeding the 10, then we would have to apply the ordinance. But they're free to adjust their capacity to 10 or less.
So as currently, unless you, you know, you have more than 10 people in your business, you wouldn't fall into this ordinance as written. If the council wanted to amend the ordinance to specifically address salons or massage therapists, it would have to be with the specific intent to address the health concerns in related to the virus. And if we were to basically add her salon on because of the possibility of unemployment benefits, that would exceed our authority. Because the authority for this ordinance is in response to the coronavirus. It can't be addressed for anything such as unemployment issues. On a side note, I'm self-employed too. So I've been kind of looking at the matter myself. From my understanding, and don't quote me on this, because I haven't dug into it, self-employed persons don't qualify for unemployment. But there are several, I wish I had brought the packet, but maybe.
I've been looking into it.
But there's like a $10,000 grant that you don't have to pay back.
That's the emergency injury disaster loan. So I have all the information here for all the business stuff if we need to go into it.
And that's been good about giving it to you now.
There has been a lot of changes going in that.
It's changing every day.
I just checked before I came to this meeting to see what, where they were standing with businesses. Andrea may be able to help you with this, because I think you were on the same webinar I was on this morning. So we do have a lot of, as far as up-to-date information as it goes now. Dusty Johnson was talking about trying to do what he could or the government could to keep us business, because I'm also, right? Self-employed, my husband and I are, to keep businesses off of the unemployment.
Correct.
And then that was where all of the disaster stuff came through. There was the Paycheck Protection Program, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, the SBA Debt Relief, the SBA Express Bridge Loans. So that's where they're trying to funnel us business entrepreneur, trying to keep us going that way, to keep us away from the unemployment. The unemployment stuff that did come as new was the self-employment. We did become eligible. But it was kind of a little bit vague that way as far as what made us eligible if it was an ordinance and I was looking into that. Was it something that was, and it didn't, at this point, that was not clear at all, would this help at all? I did see lack of childcare became something that you could now know as far as I can get unemployment if us, whatever parent is staying home specifically for that reason, because we don't have childcare. So that is the most up-to-date stuff. I don't think that if we even change this ordinance to specifically say that, that at this point, that it would help at all. And to only note one business as closed.
Well, just salon, barber shops, massage therapy, tattooing, I mean, none of us.
So then we would say one was closed and the rest were 10. It just doesn't fit the ordinance, and it wouldn't help at this point. But I am watching it. Because if there's something that we can do to help the all of us small bit, because really, Hot Springs is made up of a lot of us entrepreneurs. So I am doing everything I can to watch that, to see if there's something that we can do specifically to address that.
Thank you very much for your comment.
If I could, I want to make, I want to make sure that I'm understanding what you've just requested of us. You were asking us to mandate you closing, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Because we cannot comply.
Okay, but, yeah, I, and I want to say thank you for that. Because to me, that says you feel the ordinance that we're proposing tonight is important. It takes the steps that you, as an individual businessperson, feel are necessary to take to protect your clients and to protect you. And it's, it's a sound ordinance. There's good reasoning behind it. And you're asking us to implement even more than what's in here.
Correct.
So as a business owner, I want to say thank you for recognizing that and putting your support behind the ordinance. I appreciate it. It means a lot.
Thank you.
Garland, do you want to finish? Sorry, I jumped in there. And I see Andrea is ready to go too. So is there any more that you wanted to add?
No, just to clarify, if we name any specific businesses, it must be tied to our authority, which is related to the virus.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other communications from the public? Again, thank you for your comments. Go ahead, please come to the mic.
Hi, I'm Heather Ramsey. I own Bodyless Massage Therapy. And I know I emailed you, Mayor Cody.
Yes.
And Missy. And it does relate healthcare wise, if you think about it. I can't massage six feet away from my clients. And while yes, I appreciate Mayor Cody addressing me as a essential business because to my clients, I am, I am putting myself at risk. I am putting my children at risk. And this is something I'm passionate about. But I can't close without getting fallback from our county and my clients and people that call. Well, it's not mandated you close, so why are you closing? I got cussed out by somebody here on business yesterday because I said, "I'm sorry, I'm limiting my clients at this time." And I have limited my clients. But what happens if somebody comes to my table to her salon or her salon and lies to us? What happens this? I have clients who before had told me on a form that they signed to cover my butt that they are perfectly healthy. And then 30 minutes on the table into a two-hour session go, "Oh yeah, I had open-heart surgery six months ago." That's a big difference than perfectly healthy. We're trying to protect ourselves, and we're trying to protect our kids. We cannot be six feet from our clients. We can't do nails six feet away from our clients. We can't do hair six feet away from our clients. So it's not just the, ooh, we get benefits, which actually are not available yet. And I keep getting told by everyone, "Apply for a loan." Well, as a sole proprietor and a sole employee, I kind of think right now is the worst time I could apply for a loan. Because what happens if this draws out till June? I sold 35 clients the week, the first week of March. And every week it has steadily declined to where this week I sold two. I cannot survive on $135 on those two clients. I can't pay my $1,000 rent, my phone, my internet, and everything else on those two clients a week. I'm a essential business, as you, as I was told yesterday by Mayor Cody. But if I can't survive, I close my shop. Which means not only myself, but the two other massage therapists that do rent a room for me are now out of practice. And at this moment, as I am aware, besides two people that operate out of their homes, I am the only massage business open in this city. Because the other one is seasonal. So if I close up, there's no massage therapist in town during the winter months for our locals. There's a reason I stay open. It's for our locals. I survive on my locals. I don't do this for the tourists. I don't do this to make money. Honestly, I just want to survive and help my family. My husband is a first responder. He's actually with Hot Springs Ambulance. What happens if I get a sick person home or a sick person there? I can't go home to my three kids. My husband works 48-hour shifts and 24-hour shifts at two different ambulance services. So I'm leaving my three kids just totally unsupervised while mom has to self-quarantine because dad has a more important job. And if I close my business, then I'm taking away from my family at this point. Because right now, it is only states that you can get grants and everything else. It's, I know it's coming, but how long? If we wait a month, I will be closed. I talked to Ivy Goman, and I personally know she will be closed if this waits a month before self-employed people can get help. We can't take loans. What happens in June when those loan payments are due and my business isn't built back up because everybody else is out of work? Well, yes, I might help my clients if they see me as a central part of their healthcare. They can't afford to pay me if they have other bills due. So it's not just about the money. It's about understanding we need to be listed because we can't stay six feet away.
Okay. Garland, do you, one of the comments was that this spa would be considered a health, is that something that would fit into the ordinance?
I would defer to Bill and Bob because they've reviewed those CDC reports and recommendations way more than I have. I would say if closing those specific businesses would fall within the CDC recommendations and/or the governor's executive order, I would see no problem. As long as it's related to the health emergency that we're facing.
I would go back to our daughter is in a hair salon in Rapid City. So when you were talking about you can't do your business six feet away from the patient, from the customer, the discussions that we've had with her is we, I recognize that. And for me, it's a, it's a contractor and understanding between you and your customer. Where you have that conversation. They should be asking you.
And it's just that they don't.
And, but if, then for me, it would be a matter of assuring them. Okay, I haven't been anywhere that, you know, I know I've been exposed to the coronavirus. And then you asking them the same thing. So I'm hearing the same thing from you that we heard earlier, is that you need a mandate. Or, but it seems like we can't give that mandate. But then, again, I'd mentioned, we talked about spas and hair salons. So that you could operate, yes, there isn't that six-foot separation. But you've done your due diligence. You've asked them, do you have the coronavirus? Have you been exposed to it? Do you feel that you are or aren't? And if you're satisfied they haven't, we recognize that's the uniqueness or the flexibility that you need in this to go ahead and to provide that service.
But that's canceling. They're canceling. You know, I, like we said, I went from 30 some of my clients a week to two. Because clients are scared. They're scared just as we are scared. I don't want to take it home to my kids. Teresa doesn't want to take it home to her kids. You know, it's not just the money aspect. It's we can not stay six feet away. You know, and comparing this to a bowling alley, I, you know, I don't even know where to go there. Because a bowling alley can obviously stay six feet away from their clients. You know, and I'm trapped in a room, not trapped. I'm in a room with my. and I'm trapped in a room, not trapped, I'm in a room with my classmates sometimes for two hours, you know, sometimes. My longest sessions are four hours, four hours that I'm in a room with somebody, they may lie, they do it to get the service they want. If somebody, understand that, if somebody wants this service bad enough, they will lie, just as Teresa said, she had somebody bring a sick kid, I had people, flu season, oh no, it's just allergies and then the very that afternoon seeing on Facebook, yep, tested positive for the flu today, you know, so now I'm shut down for that, you know, so this is just getting worse and worse. People are lying, people are not, you know, taking it as seriously as we would like for them to take it and that's why we're asking for a little bit of help from the city, I mean for all of us, every single massage therapist in town and every single hairstylist and esthetician in town to say, we need help, we need this, you know, and what's going to happen if we don't, we lose our businesses, the city loses more businesses and I think that's the last thing that any of us really need right now.
I I don't recall comparing you to a bowling alley.
We were compared to the bowling alley, yes, yes, sir.
If if I did, that was never my intention to to lump you in there, I I was simply speaking to a bowling alley that could provide a service. I'm flabbergasted by what you're requesting of us. I expected to get hammered that we're not doing enough or we're doing too much and you're telling us we're not doing enough.
Well, the people that care about this community, it's not enough.
No.
So can I, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this, one, we were wondering about unemployment and having that as what it.
It is not available yet.
Right, I get, but the second one that they're saying is that you're getting backlash from clientele that if you say yourself, I am closing, that you think that they are going to cause problems for you in your future.
It has been and it's across the nation, over 40 states in this country have closed down salons, spas, massage therapists, health clubs, health spas and continue on. Five cities in this state, as this afternoon, have done the same thing that are fighting for the same reasons we are fighting, massage therapists all over the state. If you go on South Dakota Massage Facebook page, it is screaming, help us, we are asking for help.
So you'd rather have a mandate that says, close it down than being able to self.
Yes, yes, because it's, we're stuck in that, darn if you do, darn if you don't. If we choose to close, then people call us, well, you're not mandated to close, why are you closing? You know, this is just ridiculous, you're going way over forward.
Right.
But at the same time, we're getting ridicule from our other people across the country, across even the state. Well, I'm a massage therapist and I closed after morality. Well, I tried to do the same, but when I have people calling me, cussing me out and everything else, it makes it hard. It really does make it hard, you know, we still have bills due and without the help now that is available, which is not for self-employed people.
Right.
Yes, it might be coming.
Right.
But when, a month down the road, would half of us have to shut our doors because we can't pay our leases? I mean, it's one of those, it's now or never, it's going to be either we act and we act in all or it's going to be too late and at that time, I'm scared we will lose half of our businesses that are self-employed as far as hairstylists and massage places.
Andrea, do you have anything that you want to add? Because there's a ton going on on the business side of things and so I just see her over there and so I kind of was hoping that we could hear from her regarding that that business part of things.
Thank you, sir.
I use hand sanitizer between each one, so this is going to smell like hand sanitizer, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Cody and City Council for your candid, honest approach and your proactive actions on behalf of the city.
Could you speak up just a little bit, Andrea? Us old people that got old ears are having a bit of trouble.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to say thank you, Mayor Cody and City Council for taking a proactive approach and being candid and honest about the situation at hand. I don't have all the answers, every day, every half an hour, new information comes out, an article will come out in the paper tomorrow covering three of the programs and as soon as we got the article together, things changed. So that's the nature of the beast for the moment. I will say that in my understanding, and I will try to confirm it again, when signatures were requested from businesses across the state regarding the fact that they were being impacted by the COVID virus, the state needed so many signatures in order to apply and say, as a state and say, yes, we have an impact, these funds can come to us. That that covers Teresa's question, okay? So you don't have to have a mandate at the local level to apply for reemployment?
One of the flip flops when they tap out.
Right, I don't think that's going to happen.
Okay.
That said, many more programs are coming out to try to avoid people going into reemployment and one of those is the EIDL program. When you get into it initially, and now I'm talking to you guys, when you go into it initially, it looks like a loan. And I I went through the application today, it took about 10 minutes to do it and from what I can tell, you you show your earnings, your income from last year and what you've got now and the difference is what you will qualify for. You don't have to take it all, but the first $10,000 of it reverts to a grant. So let's say your business made $34,000 last year and right now you're 20, that's the difference, $14,000, $10,000 of that would be a grant. I'm trying to get all this information up on our webpage right at the beginning so nobody has to scroll anywhere to get to it and when I get it up in a manageable format that's anybody can access and understand with the links, I would appreciate it. Poor John is the only one I can get to because our emails are not connected any longer, but maybe on your website, in the Chamber website, if you could refer people to our That's everything I had, although I just found out in the last half an hour that student loans are going to be set at interest at 0% and payments will be deferred through September 30th. It's it's non-stop changes as as things are coming down.
Same with SBA loans, they were giving some six-month forgiveness, so you have some SBA loans. I also went and did the application just to see what it was like. The only thing I could not come up with as far as how is the process to go, because that 10,000 is I think being looking at more as a grant than a loan and that was what one of you were asking me.
But there is a limit, there is a limit to the amount of money that's in that fund. So if you think you may need to access it, go ahead and fill out the loan. You don't have to accept it just because you applied, but do it now so that that money is encumbered on your behalf.
Did you see the process for forgiveness? That was the part I didn't like because it seems like there's a second step as far as as asking for it to be the grant, that this is not a loan. Did you see that process? That was what I was searching for. So I think if we haven't seen that yet, there is a process, we will find that. So if any of you are looking for that, I think Andrea, it sounds like she's posting that, but we can make sure all of us businesses know that of how to, if you apply for it, there is, I know another process that they were saying today in that webinar, how you do the next step to have that forgiven. So we will keep an eye on it.
And we're all learning as we go.
Yes.
So I hope that's helpful.
I thank you, by the way, to everyone who's given in for watching.
And one other thing too, if there are specific questions, the congressional offices do have information on all the different programs and I know they've been sending that down and so you can contact them also for up to date information and and new programs that are available. We feel for you and you know, it's those taxes you pay also come to support the city so we all we all suffer when you suffer, so thank you for for being so passionate and shared. Any other comments, communications from the public? Yes?
I'm Tony Burke, so Derek's living here in town. I think you guys are rocking hard, but although my feeling is maybe this is the wrong spot to go and this name hasn't been getting clear because I held on for years. As far as unemployment, I don't know, a bar in real Minnesota, in fact, 22 years ago, it went down in a tornado and much to my surprise, I applied to the state of Minnesota and I got unemployment because it was a disaster. So I think it's going to come here in South Dakota.
I did see some writing on that as well as the disaster, things coming that way. So it's in the works, it's just what's going to come down, we just don't know for sure. But I don't think you're going to need a city mandate to to address that.
Yeah, that's why I think maybe you're in a spot here for that. Like I said, I was surprised you get Minnesota, it wasn't much, but it got to the day. The main thing here that's asking is about clarification as we get back to the actual ordinance here and I talked to you, George, about it, but clarification was people in my restaurant. We talked about curbside, we've got the drive-through, we're good there, curbside, I don't see how we're going to do a lot of curbside anyways, but my question was about people coming actually into the store. My feeling is I just assume they weren't coming into the store, even if you, and we have seven employees on most of the time, so three people coming in, but my feeling is if you have people coming to the store, they're basically coming into my restaurant area, my kitchen area, and that concerns me a little bit. So I was wondering if you could get some clarification on that as far as the difference between curbside and whatever. Thank you.
Okay, and obviously they cannot, under this ordinance, come in to eat, that would be and however you determine the pickup, do you have a pickup point inside your store or curbside outside your store, that's yours to determine as a business model that you choose to to follow. Bob, do you have any further clarification?
I would agree with what you had said, that's what we really focused on is allowing the businesses themselves to to decide what works for you and what doesn't. How how would you provide that curbside service?
So are you allowed them to come in the store and take out or not?
No. And if they went in your little entry area? The devil's in the details, isn't it?
Well, that's why I look at for clarification.
Yeah, so curbside.
Yes, curbside.
Yeah, I think that's what we need, that's what the ordinance says, that's what we need to do.
Bill, do you have any comments?
Well, it does say takeout, delivery, curbside, drive-through. So if we go by the letter, if you decide to allow them to come in to your register and pick up the food and if you've got seven employees in there, you could allow three customers to come in if you maintain, make sure they maintain the six-foot separation. The way we have it written at this 20 seconds says takeout. So that we're allowing the ordinance, the way I understand it, takeout allows for customers to come in, to retrieve their food and give you money. Now, if you decide you don't want to do that, you don't have to do that, the the ordinance allows it, but it does not mandate it.
And the reason the takeout would allow a quick, basically a quick pickup, you're not, people would not be eating, they'd be coming in, ordering ahead and then coming in to.
Well, it's now our takeout, is they come in, they order food and they'll stand wherever you put six feet away and they wait for it to finish.
And if that concerns you, then you know, I think with your drive-through and curbside, you can you can resolve that issue. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I am Steve Shannon, one of the co-owners of Health for Life Fitness on Highway 18. Some discussion on the athletic facilities, health clubs, things in that manner. For example, our facility is close to 8,000 square feet in Kirchner and at any given time, we don't have any more than six people in that facility. Secondly, it has been proven that exercise boosts the immune system and that's important based on issues that we're dealing with. We also as a facility, we're a 50% and as part of that, we have partnered with Health for Life Fall River County Services, the hospital, as partners to work with the Parkinson's patients. I think you probably saw in the article in the newspaper. We shifted our whole attention a couple of years ago towards health and rehabilitation. My son, who's one of the personal trainers, as well as my wife and myself, all work in conjunction with our members and members that are sent to us by Cascade Typhus Fracture, by Brad from Battle Mountain and also the hospital, of working with people on the next step after the rehabilitation of an injured. This is not the normal or the norm for a athletic club or something in that manner. And I'm just wanting to be assured to everyone that what our social spacing, the amount of square footage is not even an issue. Secondly, when you walk into our facility, there are sanitation areas there, we sanitize their hands. Our current members are working real hard at every time they walk in and they use a piece of equipment to wipe and back down and then when they leave, they sanitize their hands again, all right? I don't see that happening in grocery stores or hardware stores or any of the other areas in here. We've taken steps to make sure that we're part of the community and are adding to help to try to resolve the issues that we're dealing with. And I'm just asking that we're, that you look at us differently than you would look at athletic facility or something in that manner, because we're really not, not anymore. We work with Medicare, people with silver sneakers, silver and fifth and healthy contributions. We're the only facility in town that has been, is that a timing limit for me? We're the only facility in town that has been awarded those things so that we can assist people in that area. Questions?
I do.
Okay.
You had mentioned the size of your facility and that it would be difficult or not, it's certainly possible that 10 people in an 8,000 square foot facility, have you seen any guidelines from CDC that focuses on number of people per square foot?
Well, since the epidemic has started, our membership usage has drained considerably. So anytime you can look at our time logs, there are not more than about six people in there anymore. Most of our classes have been eliminated with the Parkinson's or possibly a one-on-one training or something like that. I I haven't seen in the last three weeks an issue in that manner. Plus, the Chamber Commerce printed out those sheets that you put up when people enter that talk about social spacing and those are in the gym as well.
Are you asking for an exception from the 10 because of the size of your facility?
No, sir. I'm asking to be thought of separately than an athletic facility or a gym because we work in conjunction with so many people with rehabilitation and we work with the hospital and things in that manner. Our clientele is is different and what we offer is different.
So you would still adhere to the the 10?
Oh, certainly, certainly, and we are now.
So then help me understand the distinction to identify you different from a health club if you're going to operate under the same guidelines as a health club. Why would we need to have a a different designation for you?
Well, because I I restate the fact that we work in conjunction with the hospital, Parkinson's patients, we work with rehabilitation, with all the different. We work with rehabilitation with all the different venues here in town. And I don't think you can say that out of the other facilities in, in this location.
And I'm really trying to drill down into this because when you said Parkinson's, for me, you hit home. I've lost two older brothers to Parkinson's, I understand the importance of their quality of life when they can have exercise available to. I'm just trying to understand if you're still going to operate with the, the maximum of ten, regardless of the size of your facility, um, how you benefit by having a different designation?
Well, um, it was my understanding and maybe I read the rules wrong, but if this ordinance is passed, we will be forced to plug.
No, no.
It'll be under the ten and under. So, you already said that, that you were, have no more than six? Uh, I think you said at a time or so, you're good, that's fine. That falls under this ordinance as a health club, so there, there's no closing. We're only operating under the ten and under.
Well, on that page, I think you would.
And we thank you for the, uh, noting the work that you do. Very much appreciated, thanks to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are other communications from the public?
Hey, my name's Larry Pratt, please hold some cops, y'all hear me okay?
Hello?
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 Yes.
I'm over here. How's this, it's better?
Yes.
Alright, I'm only gonna talk as a citizen of this town who pays taxes, thinking of my own home, yada, 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 all that goofy stuff, okay? But I will say this, and I'm not gonna say this to hurt anybody's feelings, okay? I've always been outspoken, I wanna speak the truth, that's my way in life and that's the way I believe as a Native American, okay? I, I'm not speaking for us over here when I say this, okay? I'm one of the instructors at Bodies in Motion, okay? I have a responsibility, not only to myself, but to this community and to the people of this United States too, and to the children of this country, okay? And when I go and wanna treat, to train my students, I teach martial arts, because I'm in public every day and I drive a transit bus, okay, for public transportation. I deal with Fall River, I deal with Pine Hills, I deal with your people, I deal with your people, I deal with a lot of people, okay? If somebody wants to be at risk right now, I'm at risk every single frickin' day I get up and go to my job, okay? But I do it because of an oath I took when I was in the service to never give up on the people. I was never relieved of my oath, that's the way I feel. I have a deep responsibility because that's the way I believe and I think. I understand we need to make money, I understand we need to take care of our families, but I understand ultimately, if I'm not well, I'm not okay, and I take this out in the general public, and I ruin everyone in here. That's what I believe. So, if I'm wrong, forgive me. If I'm not right, forgive me, because I know I'm not right. That's a joke, people. Alright, that's all I gotta say, thank you, ladies.
Larry, are you in support of the ordinance?
One hundred percent, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. There any other communications from the public? Uh, here you none, Misty, do we have any email, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't answer in time.
Gotta be quick.
Yeah. Wasn't sure if I wanted to say anything. But overall.
My name's John Davis, uh, new resident of Hot Springs, I lived out of town for a while, but now I'm on a house in town. This is a great country to live in. We're here as citizens talking to our government, and our government is not trying to overthrow us. I just wanna say, let's not react with fear, but with awareness. So, be aware of your hygiene, like they say, and just take, take it easy. Don't be afraid, because fear is a killer. Love is the real power.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to hear from Rachel. Rachel?
Yeah.
Could I have your opinion? Please come to the microphone if you don't mind, forgive me later. We, we've heard from the, the other service-related, and I know you personally, so I'd like, I'd like your opinion on what, uh, what they've said.
I'm Rachel Witcher, I have the Hair Care Center. Um, I'm in agreement with Risa and them, it's, it's a big concern and we kinda feel stuck in the middle. A lot of our customers want us to keep working so they can keep their hair going, but then other ones, I'll get concerned, well, you should be open, you're infecting everybody. You're spreading, you're part spreading the disease because you're allowing people to come out of their houses. You know, like I'm forcing them to come out, so I kinda feel stuck in the middle as well. And it concerns me with my health issues of, um, like, a couple, few weeks ago, the coronavirus was horribly heard of, and this lady was in my salon. And she did a lot of coughing, but she said, "Don't mind me because I cough in my shirt." And she goes like that each time. And after she left, McDonald, I thought, "Wait a minute, shirts are loosely woven, that's not stopping germs from coming out in the air." And it's just made me really realize that I try to find a balance of looking out for my customers, keeping things sanitized, wipe down everything after every one of them, all this and that. But I also thought, I gotta look out for myself as well because same thing, people lie. And like, after I do their hair, the gal will say, "Oh, I'm so glad to get my hair done." I actually called in sick today because I'm sick, but I didn't wanna miss my appointment because it takes me weeks to get back into you. And there you go. You know, and it's, it's kinda like after you do a haircut, you say, "Oh, I'm short on funds, can I get back to you?" It's like, well, you can't take the haircut back. So, of course you gotta say, "Okay." So, we get stuck in the middle a lot.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
So, thanks for all you guys are doing.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Any other comments from the public?
Thank you, Bob. Uh, I'm sure you all know me, I'm Justin Gosman, I actually do, uh, work for the Chamber and I do work for the city as your digital media coordinator, I've been live streaming tonight, uh, this meeting, and I've been monitoring the comments. There haven't been a lot of comments that have come in in really formal, uh, sense, uh, but I did wanna relay, uh, a lot of those comments to you. What I will do is, I will copy as many of those comments and I will leave the video up so that you guys can all go through them. Um, but the vast majority of comments that I see tend to be, it seems like they're mostly in favor, generally speaking, of maintaining, you know, things that are favorable to social distancing, uh, keeping people safe. A lot of the specifics were responses to things that people, uh, in the audience, other communications from the public, um, just commenting additionally on what they had to say. Uh, but I will make those available to you, um, you know, as soon as we leave here tonight, I will send you an email with, uh, as many of those comments as I can pull from the video so that you have that to review. And, uh, to Andrea, um, I will be linking, uh, your site on the city site and Chamber site. And I wanna make sure everyone else in the community is available, uh, is aware on the, uh, the Chamber City sites. We will make that information available as fast as I can get it up, so.
And I just.
Can I please ask another unrelated question to what I spoke about?
Go ahead.
I think as a citizen of our town here, I, I'm hearing a lot of people question whether or not we could close our roads down. Uh, my understanding is, and I don't know if this is true or not, but any store is completely booked and full of people camping right now. So, can you guys address something about that in general? Is there, do you have the authority to close our roads down and prevent tourists?
Unfortunately, uh, we do not have the authority to close state and federal highways, and so, no.
Okay.
That, that is.
I just thought, you know what, I'd try and ask you and you can say publicly then.
I, I asked that earlier too, because that was my, one thing I wanted to do, was just protect us all and, and lock it all down. I do think that we can message our, um, leaders and ask them to do what a lot of states have done, which is limit travel and, and asking that to happen, they can close down those campsites, it is, you know, and do that kinda stuff. So, I think it may be good to press that a little bit more to really limit travel that way.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely get all your representatives, because we have a lot of calls, we gotta save a question.
Looks like we have another comment from the public?
Can you hear me?
Yes, so, from us. Uh, my name's Arvind, I'm from the American region. I wanna let you know that we closed it, and, and to the general public, we support this ordinance one hundred percent. You know, it's important, uh, the reason we closed it is because we have a responsibility to our employees, protect them. Uh, one of the things ladies are very concerned about, and you might consider, is putting something in your ordinance that says if you operate a business that puts you in close personal contact with the general public or with your customers, that you should follow the CDC guidelines. It would be applicable to close contact in a hospital or other setting. That would alleviate your problem because they aren't gonna be able to get those supplies. So, there's no way they could comply if you put that in there, that would be just a general thing. We cover them and give them something to tell the irate people. "Hey, guys, I'm sorry, we can't get those personal protective equipment, uh, suits and everything, so we could actually touch them." I, I deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other communications from the public? If not, we do have some emails that, uh, I believe they were sent in, and I'd ask Misty to, uh, read those and, uh, the, uh, council then can comment on, on the emails.
Thank you, Mayor, I have an email from Gary Strasser. He has a few suggestions regarding the ordinance, and I think Bob will go over his recommended changes to the ordinance when we read the ordinance. Um, he does mention that churches and other places, the worship courts specifically mentioned, he addressed that in your review, that'll be added in. Um, he was wondering if you wanted to discuss this, I think you already have. His own personal opinion is that these facilities, although should be closed to groups of ten or more, although their offices could remain open and the facilities could provide live streaming and other online methods to remain in touch with their conversations with the public. He has some suggestions, enlarged in red font, he thought some of the changes could be included in order to preserve some of the details of this pandemic in city records for generations to follow. He asked for your forgiveness as some of the suggestions are very picky and others are subject to personal preference. They're only intended to be helpful. And he wanted to thank you and say that he's glad our local government is taking this action.
Any questions or comments on, uh, that email from Gary? There any other emails, Misty?
That was the only one.
Okay.
Mayor, you're making me feel guilty here, it seems like I'm the only one that thinks my opinion probably matters more than, than it does. But I'd like to, to comment on, on Dr. Strasser's, um, email. I had the privilege of working with, with Dr. Strasser for over thirty years, he's a radiologist, retired radiologist from the VA. He's meticulous, and Misty was talking about some of the other things that, uh, are, is in his email. Speaks to, uh, how he performed his job related to veterans. Uh, he's the kinda radiologist that you want reading your x-ray, he's not gonna miss anything. And he's one of those genuine souls that, um, if you've, if you've had the opportunity to know him, uh, you count yourself lucky. So, I appreciate what he provided, uh, he doesn't often speak out, um, and when he does, he feels it's important. And Misty was talking about, uh, some of the changes that he felt were important to have in it. There are changes that I hope our lawyer will tell us, don't speak to the ordinance itself, uh, the implementation of the ordinance, but they speak to the whereas in the ordinance. Uh, so, the whereas, as I understand it, is setting up why we're doing this, but doesn't, wouldn't significantly change the ordinance. Uh, but he talks about his feeling that it's important, um, to paint a picture of where we're at in time. Uh, so, when we talk about a hundred countries in the ordinance, uh, we're now up to a hundred and ninety countries. When he talks about, uh, when we talk about the school that's being let out or has been out for two weeks, school will be out for May first. So, it helps when somebody goes back to look at it, uh, five, six years from now, trying to understand why this important, or why this ordinance got so much, um, attention. It's those kinds of things that help paint that picture of why we're having this long discussion. Uh, so, I appreciate his comments and I think the others, the other edits, uh, are, uh, I forgot to put a D, uh, for "and," and it just ended up being "and," or I added a D. Uh, but that is the essence of Dr. Strasser and, uh, I appreciate his comments, so thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Is there any, uh, other comments from the council? If not, I would ask for a motion, uh, to pass ordinance, the first reading of ordinance twelve twelve.
Is it wrong? Did you have?
No, I just have, just a little.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Obviously, I was born today, I went and checked out the two thousand and ten census for the city of Hot Springs. The median age this town, this is ten years ago, it's forty-nine years. Thirty-two point nine percent of people at that time were forty-five to sixty-four, twenty-three percent were sixty-five and over, fifty-five point nine percent of the people in this town are infected with this virus. Also, anybody, not gonna put myself in that one, I'm in both parties, anybody with an autoimmune disorder, I'd double it, so. I'm in favor of this ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Ron, appreciate those comments. I would go ahead and ask for a motion to approve, uh, ordinance twelve twelve, the first reading.
I make a motion, uh, to approve the first reading of ordinance twelve twelve, an emergency ordinance to address a public health crisis by implementing certain measures which have been deemed necessary to slow the community's spread of coronavirus COVID nineteen.
It has been moved and seconded that we have passed this first reading. Uh, are there any questions, comments, or discussion from the council?
Um, I have one question. The, the testimony from the public brought up one question, um, but it, it got me to thinking about another issue, I know, um, Risa, is it Risa? Maybe the, your, your motivations may have been twofold, that I'm gonna focus on the one issue. Is when they, it really did surprise me when you said, "Will you shut us down?" Gotta tell ya, I was not prepared for that request. I was, I was prepared for some other discussions, but as each one of those industries shared their issues, and I'm gonna be a little, this may sound mercenary, but I'm gonna set aside the economic impact that this has on your industries. And if you look at the potential to spread the disease if we allow them to remain open, whether they choose to because they're trying to make a dollar, whether they choose to stay open because they feel they have to, whether they choose to stay open because they succumb to peer pressure or customer pressure, regardless of their motivation for staying open, based on what they've told us, on what some of their customers do not always behave in a truthful manner. up to unnecessary spread? So is it in our best interest to add a new paragraph that mandates the closure of spas, hair salons, and nail salons to prevent the spread of COVID-19?
And I would like to add to that and ask Garland the specific question. What we're dealing with is South Dakota codified law. For an ordinance to pass, we have to have a first reading, we have to have a minimum wait of five days, and we have to have a second reading, and then the ordinance has to be published. Because it's an emergency, a normal ordinance then wouldn't go into effect until 20 days after it's published. Because it's an emergency, we can waive the 20 days. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So what we're up against, and what I'm understanding you to say is, you want that mandate in there, you want what Bill just articulated?
Yes, sir.
There was some discussion about whether we should have a second reading of the, no, that doesn't even apply because of the veto of Hill. So it comes down to significant changes. If this ordinance is passed tonight, and it's deemed that what you're asking to have added is a significant change, then we have to have another first reading, which is next Monday. And speaking, we've already talked with Brett, and he's working with us as much as he can to be able to have, if the second reading is approved Monday night, he can still have it in the paper to be published on Thursday, so that the original active date would be April 9th. So my question to Garland is, when adding that, and again, what we need to hear, not what we might want to hear, your email kind of talked about it, first reading versus second reading is, you know, getting back on track to doing it the right way. Is that a significant change, a significant enough change in your opinion, that if it were added in for the second reading, that it couldn't be a second reading, it would have to be a new first reading?
Did you get my, first off, did you, did Misty, did you pass out that memo? Okay. All right. So, the, the exact terminology, and I was looking for that memo, I didn't bring it with me, is, is if the substance of the ordinance changes. Typically, we hold to a strict standard of, you know, allowing edits, typos, things like that to be, not be allowed between the first and second reading. Okay? That's kind of my personal opinion of how our standards should be. In looking at this matter, I researched what significantly changing the substance of the ordinance would be. And like most things, there's no case law or guidance on that matter. So I put it out to the, I have access to a, what's called listserv, where I get to put out questions to other municipality attorneys. And I did get a couple of responses. It said the substance, if your substance of the ordinance, the main substance, is you're addressing the COVID-19 virus, and you make a change such as what we're talking about here, you're okay with doing a first and a second reading. Okay? With that change at the second reading. But as I always say, I would revert to that cautionary, because of the circumstances with this virus, I would always still revert to that cautionary stance that I stated before about edits, typos, things like that. But there is no set in the rulebook definition of what substance is. So I did ask a couple of the attorneys, and that was the reply I got. And in looking and thinking about it, I would say, in my opinion, adding a provision like that would be okay between the first and second reading, especially with the mitigating circumstances of addressing this COVID-19 virus.
And could we do this one as a resolution? Like, say, say we didn't add it to this one, but added a resolution, could we do that process or not?
Yes. The way we have the ordinance written right now, we have it amended, it can be amended, I don't have the terminology memorized, but the way this ordinance is written, I wish I had that provision in front of me, but like I said, the distinction between an ordinance and a resolution. Okay, so this ordinance is establishing the power of the city to regulate business in response to COVID-19. If it comes along, I'll put this out there, say we want to no longer do the 10 people rule, we want to actually close restaurants and bars, that could be done by a resolution referring back to this ordinance.
I have a thought. What if we, the wording would be more along the six-foot CDC guideline rule? If you are not able to operate your business according to CDC six feet guidelines, then that's less wording and no specifically, specifically changing the item.
I just would wonder how that would impact the grocery stores, because I don't feel like they can necessarily always maintain that.
Well, they would still be under the, the things that do not apply.
So we just put this as like below that where it would affect them?
Yeah, that's how I see it. If we did that wording, it wouldn't be, it would still be, the exceptions are here, but it would address what they're specifically asking.
If I may speak up, as far as the question about significant or substantial changes, was that clear as mud, you know, as far as my explanation?
But I just want to make sure we don't get into a situation where we think we're doing the right thing, you know, we feel like it's not significant, and somebody calls our hand on it and says, "No, that was a significant change. I challenge it. It should have gone back to another first reading." You know, the timing is ideal for us right now. If we have a first reading tonight, then we can have a second reading on Monday. It could be published, and we're ready to go by the original date line, the date. As you said, we've saved the ordinance. To Allison's comment, if we just went with the ordinances itself with a single change of church, and then on Monday night had a resolution with the necessary language that these folks are asking for, that, haven't we covered both of them?
That would definitely work. Do the second reading of the ordinance, and then do the resolution referencing that ordinance, but adding that language for salons and massage partners, or massage therapists. That would.
Cover both points.
I'd have to really look at it to make sure, but I'm pretty much of the opinion that would work. Okay?
And my request back to you folks would be, I trust what you're telling us, but I hope you also understand that you're representing, you say you're representing X number of other people. Those people may step up and say, "No, you know, I didn't have that conversation." Though, for me, it would be helpful if you just get a letter together, have everybody sign it, say what you're supporting, and provide it for the council's review so we can look at it and say, "These folks are behind it."
My understanding is every other stylist in town has either emailed somebody, the mayor, or maybe Misty, or Rachel's here tonight, and I only had spoken with a lady named Jackie at Haircut.
But do you understand where I'm going?
Yes, sir.
You know, we're in a situation, we need to represent everybody, and we really need to hear from everybody. Because what you're asking for, as Bill said, I don't think any of us expected someone to come and say, "No, I want you to close us down." That's a significant departure from what I was expecting. So it would be helpful to us if you would just have everybody respond, if that's via email or whatever it is, you know, identify how many they are, so we can look at them and say, "Yes, every one of these are in full agreement." Please petition your council.
Yes, sir.
Did you check with the barber shops?
You know, I didn't even think that new guy, my girl's a barber, but she's all for it. But I didn't check with that new guy in town.
What about Jay's?
Jay is for it.
Risa, do you guys have a association or anything through South Dakota? I mean, we all, we're, you know, I have a license.
Barbering, Cosmopolitan.
And do they have a stance that they can say, "All, overall, this is our stance that..."
They're bringing it up to the governor.
Yeah, that is the hard thing, because I worry about that. If we shut down anything, and we're not doing this together, a whole state, that then, two weeks later, if the governor decides to shut it down, then we proceed. I think that's the thing that we all feel so much stress about, all of us that are in contact with people, is that if I shut down right now, what happens in two weeks? What's the governor going to do in two weeks? You know, so I don't know what to do. I can't, and that's why we feel so much stress if we're cleaning our little heart, you know, and I think I have more chemicals on me than, you know, so, so I feel that. I was just wondering, I know, you know, licensing usually has a stance and can use that stance, so.
And if I can chime in on that, at Garland's counsel here, by doing this by resolution, if the situation changes in two weeks, the council can vote to negate the resolution, and we don't have to go through and change the ordinance.
And I wouldn't want this to slow down this ordinance, because this is important. We need to get in front of this. I mean, it truly does. I want my kids out of my house.
Yeah, so I think we can address what you're looking for. We just need to do it by resolution, is my, my feeling as we were discussing it, is that what would be, what we need to do and hear from all of you to make sure, and then know that even if we do that, the governor could change it, and it goes on and on and on. So we just want to make sure that that's the right thing to do, or do you turn to your licensing board or whatever, ask them for an overall statement of it? I know the CDC's also been discussing masks for us that are closed, and I was hoping they would make a determination about that. I saw South Korea did, absolutely. Anybody that's six feet and closer, you wear a mask, absolutely. And so I was hoping our CDC would do the same thing, but we can implement that too, and I just ordered some to do that as well. So these are all things we can do without creating a whole thing to shut everything down. But we can move forward with this ordinance still, with knowing that we can work on your stuff if need be.
I would just like to take a moment to clarify that your council packets will be ready by Friday morning. Today is Wednesday evening. You're talking about drafting a resolution that will need to be drafted correctly and legally, because this ordinance will not be in effect until after you pass the resolution. We would have a very small amount of time to get them all prepared and done in time for the next conference. Not that we can't do it.
Can you help us with that, your own?
Of course.
Thank you.
I have a question for the ladies. It's not legally related, and I'm kind of overstepping my bounds as far as attorney, but what is the difference between you self-closing and having the city council closing?
The concern is being, we're all self-employed mostly. It's having the availability of funds by having this virus, this emergency pandemic, being able to shutting us down. So there's stuff that's coming available, and Andrea knows some of it, and, you know, we're all just trying to figure that out. And so it's changing every day, every half hour, whether or not there's possible unemployment insurance for self-employed people, because we don't get it, we don't pay any. And to speak on that, it's the health as well, you know, and that's me and Risa sat and talked last night, because I don't know what I could do if I contracted, you know, or if somebody came in my business that had, you know, to that same effect, could order within that six feet, you know. Guess what? Hospitals are getting all these, you know, protection gear and everything else. We can't order those. They're not available. And maybe supplier, you contact, you try to buy them, you can't. I cannot protect myself enough. And going back to the spread of it, if I, after I contracted by a client that is here in town or within town or whatever, my daughter carries to nursing home. I have a DNA that works in, or that lives in my house, she carries to nursing home. My husband can turn around and carry to the ambulance station. My other two kids aren't being compromised. But if I don't have something, and trust me, I've been a perfect client, that says, "Look, I have to close, I catch licks," and I'm scared that even if I say, "Okay, I'm closing," how much licks am I going to catch here? I might lose my business because people are still, "Oh, my gosh, she just oversells this," or go overbound.
We've, if you're going to be making comments, let's get to the microphone. Let's get back to the business at hand. We've got a motion on the floor, and I think we've heard that before. Did you have anything else that you needed to add? You can get up to the microphone so we all can hear. I should have jumped in a little earlier. I may make one last comment. That gets back to my statement earlier. As far as tying into closing these certain businesses, it must be related to the statutes listed in the ordinance. It can't be anything outside the health concerns related to this virus and those two statutes. Okay, thank you. Any other comments, discussion from the council?
Just wanted to add one last thing to my, because I've got a very cut. You know, without this, there seems to be a very big problem by hand sanitizers, bikes, or anything in this town. I've been trying for two weeks. So do you think that will cut down the traveling of people like this ordinance?
Okay.
Because we don't have any protection.
Right, and we need to keep those businesses open and do right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'd ask Misty if you would call the roll, please.
David Barrett?
Yes.
Bill Lucas?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Ron Rogers?
Yes.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Yes.
Ray Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the first reading has passed. That is the final item on our agenda. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second. Been moved in second. If we adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. And again, I want to thank everyone for honest discussion.
Garland, I'd like to talk with you after we're done.
Thanks, everybody, for coming in and paying some of your attention.